It's not official, it's not a census number. It's simply a number that we feel is accurate enough to simply award, for instance, any liquor license. Because for every 3,000 population, we can add a limited liquor license. So if we choose to recognize a population of 25,000, then the county gets three appointments. And that's according to state law. So what we're trying to do is, and then the park, it's been practiced, that the park board also gets a representative on the planning and zoning commission, although it's not mentioned in code. So that's a practice, but not a requirement, that's in the code. And so since we've had practiced things that are outside of the code, or at least not mentioned in the code, I wanted to make sure that the city commission has a clear definition of what they would like, what they desire to be represented on the planning and zoning commission. So we put together in the memo some items that I would like to put for, before you today. What I'd like to recommend is that there's at least six, but no more than seven, at our members who reside within corporate limits in the city of Dickinson. And one of those members be a sitting city commissioner. That's also not mentioned in the ordinance, but it has been practiced. I highly recommend one of those members be a sitting member of the park board. In the memo, I actually recommend a public school board member as well, but being in contact with the school board late last week, they, they're fine with not having representation on the planning and zoning commission. Certainly doesn't mean that you can't request an appointment, but in my discussions with the superintendent of schools, and he had had a ensuing conversation with the school board president, they don't desire a seat, a reserved seat on the planning and zoning board. And then starting on me, would appoint members per state law, I think that the city should continue to require that one of those members reside within the ETZ, but outside the city limits. So that would be, currently based on existing population, a two mile zone in which someone could be represented in the board. So my question for the city commission, before I would make any recommendations in terms of new members is, what do you want your planning and zoning board to represent? Standard any questions that you may have?
Any feedback for the city commissioner?
Well, I think what you're describing isn't too far away from where we are today, and seems to be working well. I think the ETZ membership would really be desirable. We could fill a spot in ETZ. Especially when you're in a high growth time, as we are. So generally, I think what you're describing is appropriate.
Mr. Jackson, you certainly agree that it does reflect current practice. It just puts into code that practice, the one change would be enforcement change in the school board. But other than that, the only other question then is, was the city commission wanting to recognize a population of 25,000 or more?
Right now, I think we only have one county representative, correct?
That's correct. We have asked the county to appoint an ETZ member, but we have difficulty finding one.
Well, I think you should, the written ordinances should match what we're doing or what we desire to do. So I think to review the ordinances and make, and review state law, and then make, make the changes would, to me, would be appropriate before you would make any recommendations to appoint any new members right now. That seems to be, seems to make sense to me.
President Johnson, that's the exact calendar going down, so what I can do is document, or actually ask Attorney Gos to put this recommendation as in the memo in form of ordinance and bring it forward next city commission.
So we don't have any conflicts within our own code? How the rest of you feel?
Yeah. It's an important commission that needs to be filled. A lot of work ahead of us, and cleaning up the ordinance would be a good way to go about it.
As the park board, they're still on board, they want to keep somebody on that? Yes. Park board is this time their plan, but I was actually surprised by the school's response.
Okay.
What that, or the arguments are going to be?
Anything else on that?
You can decide at the time of adoption whether or not to recognize the population.
You know, I think we'd have to see again some, some pretty hard numbers there, you know, rather than just base it on opinion, I mean, we'd have to...
We could bring to you, President Johnson, the same numbers we did to justify the increase in liquor license, meaning the water usage, landfill usage, wastewater treatment, and all those kinds of things. They're recognized to be fairly accurate, the licenses are often verified.
Yeah, we'd want to update those.
We'd be glad.
Okay, and we're going to move on into item B, and this is a 2016 budget, and if there's people here who wish to comment on that, you'll get a chance to comment on the budget. We'll have Deputy City Administrator Valesky introduce the budget and the ordinance, and once he's done that, then we'll ask for public comments. Mr. Valesky?
Good afternoon, President Johnson. What we have before you in mind here is our current ordinance and proposed budget for 2016. Appreciate all the comments you've given during your session, and I think it included everything that we talked about in the past. So first of all, in the first section here, the actual ordinance, the ordinance itself, there it has been, it's been updated from the one that you received last week, just some minor changes on it, but I wanted to point that out, so you can see some differences in there. For example, just on the very end of the other tax copies, the Dickinson Airport authority, that number has changed. I did receive updated numbers from them today, and so I have that input there. And then on the very bottom, we have to talk about the today's for the first reading, and then the second reading, the final cast, that will be on Monday after we're finished. What public commentary? All right, so what I tried to do here is, try to represent this, is I broke out the ordinance, the sections that the ordinance holds in our mind, starting off with general funds. So what you have in front of you there is the budget for the general fund department, which is the first portion of it. You're asking for a $17,272,752 budget. On page one are the 2016 general fund revenue projections, and mainly there we're seeing is going down some of the areas that have changed. The general property taxes have included in there a $250,000 increase based off of the growth projected for 2016. We're going to look down the line there on building permits, there's an $850,000 decrease that we're showing in budget for 16, from 2015, just due to the decrease in building permits. And then people like state aid distribution, state gambling revenue, cigarette tax, highway distribution tax, all of those numbers that come through are projections from the North Dakota League of Cities, so those numbers are all input included in there. I'm not going to cover everything that's in this book, I'm just going to touch the main areas, but the rest of it's in there for backup for your reference. On page two, just looking at the water, wastewater, and admin fees, we are projecting a decrease in revenues in that area, so there's a 10 percent, admin fees are 10 percent of revenues collected in that area moving to the general funds, we're looking at a decrease of about $218,000. So overall, there is a $558,000 decrease in our projected revenues from 16 and 15. Moving on to page three, this is just, these next few pages are just different purpose projections that we'll be just discussing. On the top portion there are the income, we're showing again, there's that $558,000. One of the things that we did do, the transfer from oil impact funds, we did decrease that from about $3.5 million to just under $3 million. So we're trying to get away from that reliance to that oil impact fund and the general fund. On the expense side, just, those are the general fund departments budgets, and just a few highlights on there, under administration. You see there was a significant decrease of $3,000 in that area, and that is due mainly to good management. Moving the legal into legal and human services down below. Under engineering, there's a $612,000 decrease in budget, and that's mainly due to contracted labor, the decrease in contracted labor, and also in personal services. Down in the police department, you see $678,000 in that decrease, and that's due mainly to about $750,000 of building funds that are not included in 2016. So again, we're showing a balanced budget here between 16, for 2016, income and expenses of $17,272,752. Page four, just some more detail, looking at different categories, the general fund total by categories. As you can see here, personal services is increasing by about $407,000. Our capital expenditures are decreasing by 1.3 million, and contingency and transfer out are increasing to about $436,000. And that's due mainly to our general capital lease increases that we discussed a little bit, and also for our fleet internal service ones. Page five, we already discussed general fund by department, so the rest of them in this area are just by each department, which I will include unless anybody has any questions on a particular department. One thing I did want to discuss on page six for city commission, on the bottom right-hand side in those big letters is, big font there, are the 2016 subsidies. We did have a subsidy meeting in July where members of the community wanted to discuss what subsidies they were requesting, and this is the budget for what's highlighted. I know I kind of went through that pretty fast, there's questions on the general fund, and I apologize for being chaps here, but right on page 22 is the city of Dickinson's library budget schedule of $1,625,250. As you can see here, there really isn't a lot of difference here between the income for the library. The library's done a really great job, they've worked this well closely with the region, and the rest of the surrounding companies, and it's all with great collaborative effort from them. The only thing I just wanted to point out here on the income is the general property taxes. We're looking at approximately the same percentage increase as we showed earlier in the general fund, that gave about $27,000 in increased revenues. And then further on, down below, I mean, under income, the last ones are donations. We have a decrease of $20,000. Those donations are kind of up in the air, sometimes they come down, so we're kind of projecting just a lower level in there. As far as the expense side on personal services, for the library, we're showing a $99,000 increase in personal, excuse me, in personal expenses. And that is mainly due to part-time employees, with a $72,000 increase in that area. That's because in the past, the part-time employees for the library have not been included in the budget, and it's been commenced, and we've been running the deficit in that area, so we did get that properly, requesting a proper budget for 2016. So moving on, after the library, are the special revenue funds, for a total of $67,268,615. One of the things I wanted to talk about mainly on this, or just a point to bring out, is on the, this first sheet is just the total by all the different funds that we have. And what's really important to look at is, and the detail that I go behind there shows a fund balance of each one, this really is a really good representation of what the true fund balances are, so we kind of have to look at the individual sheets to look at. One of the big areas I did just wanted to talk about here is the oil impact funds. It's kind of, the impact funds that we receive are by annual appropriations, so we're receiving them in 2015, but they're good for 2015 and 14. So if I had everything in that in the 2015, it just really makes that graph look really bad, so I've kind of distributed between the two years, just to, and if it's kind of, and also that's how we'll be spending those revenues too. The other thing that's in oil impact funds for 2015 is, we are going to do a $6,000 transfer from the buildings construction fund, 6 million, sorry, $6 million transfer from the building construction fund into oil impact fund, just to try to get, there, we don't have very much, I'll talk about that minute here left to fund in the building construction fund, and we're just to try to close that compound. I don't know if there's any specifics on any of these that you guys wanted to discuss. The negative that you're seeing, that $5.8 million, and that you coincide, again, that's mainly because of that transfer, that $6 million transfer out, or transfer in 2015. After page 14, in this, in the special revenue, right after that, there's services. The first two pages I just wanted to point out that I included here are, you would ask about the city's total debt. So as of, as of currently, right now, we have, the first page you see, we have about $113,000, $113 million, sorry, of current debt right now, of which the greatest portion of that is from our SRF monies for the, our super bonding. And then very back, the next page, there's about $4.2 million, and this is from our, sorry, I didn't have the title on here, but these are from our general occupation, our leases, our leases that we have right now. We do not include anything for 2016 projections. So I know you have been asked that question several times, I just wanted to make sure that it's been included in there. Okay, any questions on any of those? On page one of that, right after those two sheets, is the general capital lease purchase fund. We do have an increase in leases for 2016 by about $125,000. I also wanted to point out in 2014, or excuse me, 15, we are going to do a transfer from the general fund to bring that account, it's running negative right now, to bring that account, any fund balance at zero, or some number closer to that, whatever the balance is going to be over the year, so we can bring that fund balance into zero. And then based off of our incremental expenses for the leases that we previously discussed, we should continue to bring the fund balance to zero. So that $571,000 is broken down on page two, for your reference. I know we discussed a lot of these before, I just wanted to make sure that that in front of you, so if you still have any questions. The six items that are highlighted in blue, those are the new ones for 2016. These are projected out right now, being leased out at five years and a 4% interest rate. Page three is the West River Community Center Revenue Bond Fund. Our bond payment is 2015 for $1,572,000, and for 2016, that bond payment is $1,722,000, as represented here. As you can see, there's a transfer in for half of that for about a 1% sales tax, and the other half for our utility tax. All right, moving on to the other funds of $1.8 million. The first is our building construction fund. In 2015 and 16, we're looking at predicting some interest income in there, for budget interest income. The expense side, there is some $12 million in there for budget for 2015, majority of that is the public safety center, and also the public works building. In 2016, we're projecting that for early, we have about $85,000 left to pay in the public safety center, and then we're, have about $1 million that we're holding there for, to finish paying for the brine building. You also see in 2015, under the expenses, there's that $6 million transfer which into the oil impact fund, which is leaving this balance at just under $500,000. Our suggestions would be after this, these buildings are completed, the remaining of that balance is disposed, spun out, and moved into the oil impact fund. Page two is our internal service one for our fleet department. We want to clean up on this account, on this one, mainly just in the pensions and employee benefits. A lot of the FTE, this is what we've been doing on the FTE, we're kind of still not being quoted to the right place, so that's why you see some of these numbers, particularly in the transfer out, there was zero budgeted in 2015, and $37,000 in 2016. Also on the operating expenses, there are operating supplies and the gasoline, diesel fuel, and oil. The increase that you're seeing in there is mainly we're trying to move a lot of those budgets out of the individual departments and move it into the fleet departments for those vehicles. This is an internal service fund completely funded by the rest of the department, so a lot of the transferring from other funds is coming from some of the, a few of the other departments, and some there at the end, where it's perfectly, you can have zero fund, any fund, fund balance. Okay, we're done.
Well, we do have five o'clock timetable agenda item, so we can interrupt here before you get into proprietary funds. We'll go through the timetable agenda, and then we'll come back to the budget, and those of you who are here to comment on the budget, you'll still get a chance to do that. Mr. Valesky, though, I would like to compliment you on your format and your presentation here. This is, in the time I've been here, is probably the most professional-looking budget we've seen, so thank you.
Thank you.
So it's five o'clock, we have a utility easement vacation, and City Attorney Gos is going to introduce that item.
Mr. President, Deborah Thompson, through her contractor, her estate settlement deposition, made a utility easement on the property. The homeowner is having an addition built onto her existing house, which we go over that easement. All the utility companies have been replying and signed off on the petition, as has the city commissioner. So city staff recommends approval of the resolution, the updated easement, and her contractor from her to this year.
Okay. Well, thank you. You've heard the introduction and the recommendation. Are there any comments or questions by commissioners? This, I believe, is Resolution 33-2015. Would there be a motion regarding this resolution?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Vote then. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kubis, is everyone here for the Ames State Avenue Overpass presentation?
Mr. President, I believe they are. We have two folks listed from Ames tonight. Chris Bieber with Ames Construction is here to present an overview of the State Avenue Railroad project, which maybe you've driven through in the last couple of months. He's at February 5th, if you're over at Chris Bieber.
I, yeah, I'd just soon do that, then try to go back to the budget and do two minutes on the budget, and then interrupt on the damn side.
Then we'll have Chris Bieber with Ames come up and give his overview presentation of the State Avenue.
I am a safety manager, but also public information for the Dickinson State Avenue project, so if you guys ever do have any questions, I do have cards, I will hand them out if anyone wants them, but do not hesitate to give me a call, email, I'll help you guys out with any information about the project. So it's kind of a little light, it looks like, here, but this is the project overview. Over here, we on the north side, down here by the Camp LeHart, be on the south side, if I don't push for I'm going, sorry. For this project, there is a lot of different activities going on. So far, we started in July, we're doing a lot of underground utilities, dealing with the utilities that are existing, but also putting in new ones for the drainage structure for State Avenue, and also for the city of Dickinson. What we're doing, we'll start down on the south side, we're starting on the Camp LeHart, we'll be building a new entrance and exit out onto State Avenue. We're doing a brand new concrete, going all the way up, north and southbound. We are adding in on Second and 11th Avenue, a new roadway to help in congestion, but also to help out with the new bridge structure that'll be going over BNSF rail. A lot of you guys have heard, BNSF has been wanting to put in another main track on the south side, so this will help out with the city of Dickinson, and the general public, and of course businesses, to allow the general public to go over the bridge, over the rails, and allow that congestion, and of course, safety concerns of accidentally getting hit by a train. So it definitely will help with the congestion, but also to help, help the city out for safety in dealing with the trains, and of course with BNSF. So along here, we will be doing different access points in the back area, our blue lines here are access points back into the general public. Over here, we go into the grain elevators, and of course, 11th Avenue going to Broadway, and of course with the general public, we down here have access to their homes in that area. Now, when we can do the bridge, I will do some scheduling here shortly, kind of showing you with the overview, when we start, end times, some basic general information to help out with our scope of work, and what we're planning to for the next year, and of course next year. Up here, we'll be coming up, past the north side of the tracks, we'll be doing some construction activity works, doing a lot of drain and inlet structures. On this project alone, we have about a mile long of... On this project alone, we have about a mile long of new inlet structures and ninety-seven inlet structures that we're going in. So a lot of drainage activity to help out with all the water going down to Camp LeHart, going and leaving it from, um, our roadways up here. We also too will be doing more construction activity up on LeHart Street. Uh, we will be, um, getting ready for our transition and for the general public to be able to get on and off the bridge up in that area, so we'll be starting those next year. So something that we wanted to talk about is coordination. Uh, there's a lot of stuff that goes into starting a big project like this. Uh, we've done a lot of activity dealing with the North Dakota State Department of Transportation, city of Dickinson, also to the Dixon businesses around. Like I said, I've been the public information officer for this project. I've gone around giving out flyers to the Dixon press, but also to the general public and also the businesses and letting them know that the activities come from this year. Um, Berlin Northern, we are working with them, who have been doing boring underneath the tracks for three new inlet, uh, wet utilities for their, uh, HGR designers, um, but also ATN, or ATNT, sorry, Century Lee, uh, build Mid Content, Montana, Dakota Utilities Sprint, but also our subcontractors. Um, there's big coordination on making sure everything goes as planned and, of course, we do this project safely, but also on with the, for deduction and quality for the city of Dickinson. So this is for this year alone, uh, for the work in two thousand and fifteen, we started in July, um, we will be going until November, uh, November, December. Right now, the reason for the November, December part is weather dependent. We have chosen to leave in about November, December-ish and come back next year to continue the process, um, just because of the weather up here, it's not good for the, our crews, but also our equipment out in that area. So some of the activities that we're doing are roadway excavations, so we have already put people on bypass one, which I'll show you guys here shortly, uh, but we've demoed State Avenue, we've, uh, did all of our drainage structures, pipe work, but also start pouring last week on the new State Avenue. Uh, paving operations, we will have, um, asphalt paving just for the bypasses and then, of course, concrete paving for State Avenue. I talked about the storm and drainage for the city and, of course, state. Now, there's a lot of brand new pipe in the ground, a lot of new inlet structures, so we'll continue on that process. This year, we'll be almost completed, have a couple more next year to finish on. Uh, we do have a lot of survey work, we want to make sure everything follows what our designs have fall, uh, for. Utility relocations, uh, we're doing a lot of wet utilities, whether it's, uh, sewer, water, storm, but also doing gas and electrical, whether it's overhead or down below. So we are dealing with a lot of utility relocations out there to be able to do this work activity. Uh, realignment, like I said, will be in bypass number one and bypass number two. Uh, we also too are dealing with erosion control to make sure that we keep the sediment in our work areas and not going into your guys' drainage systems, but also into the Camp LeHart, so we're keeping it all on site, keeping it up to date every single day that we're out there. And then, of course, the last bullet point there, it's possible to start a bridge construction this year. Uh, we are right now on schedule for the project, uh, of course, depending on weather, of course, we are going to start trying to drive H pile, um, this coming year. So for our project, we have designed this in four phases. So this is phase one, all the green areas are the, where general public and Pearson Oak can drive down, walk down. All the red area is where we're doing all of our new reconstruction. Right here, though, hey, you'll see green and then the red, that is our temporary bypass that we've already built and if you guys have driven down it, have already driven, driven on it. So this is all the work that we're doing here. Our phase two, sorry, will be starting to actually open up everywhere. So we'll give back, uh, the right of way, like I said, we've already started paving it, uh, we're doing a next one this week, doing another quarter. Last week, we started at four AM, finished about two, three o'clock in the morning with doing the new State Avenue concrete paving. This one here in the red, we're going to be starting to work on temporary bypass number two. So this one will be able to, after we've completed it, we'll be able to push everyone over here so that we can have full access to the new bridge structure to start driving H pile, start doing our work activities this year. So for next year, um, we're still going to be, again, goes into the weather dependence as to when we start in April, February. Um, right at the end of September, we should be almost done, uh, but we do have a week in October, so that's where our plan is to be completely done by October two thousand and sixteen. Roadway excavations will still be going on, uh, we will still be transporting or moving people on bypass number two, doing some other activities out there. We will have paving, striping operations, so we will be putting back all the lines so the general public know where to go, uh, where they can turn. We, like I said, uh, this year, we almost finished all the drainage structures, but we'll still have a couple more to do after we move people on the bypass number two. We'll be doing, uh, roadwork on West LeHart Street, we will still have utility work, whether it's underground or overhead, uh, we have all the lighting on the bridge still to do and, of course, overhead powers that are on State Avenue itself that will be coming down. One of the other biggest ones that we'll be doing next year is our MSC walls. These are our panels to allow the ramp access to the bridge and to support the general public from going on to the bridge and going down the south side or north side, depending which way you guys are going. We'll still continue on erosion control, we, of course, don't want any sediment getting into our new drainage structures that we have created, but also into the Camp LeHart. Next year, it'll be a big one for the bridges, we'll be driving more H pile, forming up our columns, our pier caps, we'll be starting to set our girders and also to start paving our concrete over our girders out there with our rebar. We'll also be doing sidewalks, um, accessways for pedestrians and lighting out there. Then, of course, at the final phase of the project, will be the State Avenue realignment and final configuration. Here's phase three, so here shortly, we'll be transporting everyone over in the bypass number two, uh, so we can have full access to start our bridge construction, our demoing and, of course, our installing of our new inlets in that work area. And then, of course, phase four, bringing everyone back over onto State Avenue and have full access, and we'll still continue our, uh, punch list items, removing any, um, excess debris that doesn't need to be there, making sure everything's set and ready for you guys to have for the city, county of Dickinson. Um, something that I did want to bring up, um, we are definitely doing a lot of closures out on the roadways, whether they're single lane, two lane, or, of course, a full closure. So I did want to give some updates about those upcoming closures. Uh, this week itself, we will be putting State Avenue down to a single lane closure. Uh, we will have P E K putting our wet utilities, our water and sewer lines across the street, so we want to protect the general public from a potential caving, uh, the traffic that will head, so, of course, our employees down on the ground connecting those utilities. Uh, I know right now, as a couple of you guys have seen, uh, West First Avenue has been shut down, that'll be reopened on Saturday. And then, uh, September twenty-sixth, um, we have coordinated with BNSF and we're coordinating with Dickinson about a full shutdown of State Avenue, uh, so we can transport people on to our secondary bypass, but also to BNSF to move their signals to the new temporary bypass, so they do need a full closure out there to make sure the trains are safe and general public crossing, they're safe, so we'll have a full closure that day on the twenty-sixth, the Saturday. So as of right now, those are the major ones that are coming up, but like I said, every single day, we're doing closures, whether single or multi-lane closure out there. We're here to make sure we protect the general public first, that's the whole entire point is traffic controls, protect the general public from our work activities, but then also too, the second part is to protect our employees from the general public. So we'll do everything possible to allow traffic through safely and ease the congestion during rush hours throughout the day, whether it's night or day. As I said, any questions?
Any comments or questions for Mr. Bieber? Well, I know our residents are looking forward to the completion date, so.
I intend to keep the public informed of future closure dates on site, um, other than our Dickinson, this, uh, public, so once our website came, I forget if anyone's with that.
Success is always a good start, so thank you.
How else do you intend to use your projects in the future?
Uh, I come up with flyers every time we're getting ready to start something big, so a full closure, so I send it to Dixon Press, I also send it out, um, email wise from the people I already have. I'm still gathering more and more, like I said, just starting in July, so as much as I can get, more I can get out, but also to around State Avenue, we do walk around, put flyers, uh, the businesses on people's doors, get them awareness of that area.
Is that week prior, a week prior?
I try to do it two weeks beforehand, so I try to get as much time as possible. I know as we all know in construction, sometimes it doesn't work out perfectly, but we'll do everything possible to make sure everyone knows about the activities two weeks beforehand.
We're recording this, so I might have to take my page.
I'll give you my card and I'll let you hold me till.
Other comments or questions? Well, we appreciate you being here, thank you.
Thank you, as for having.
Well, I really don't want to go back to the budget, so we'll continue on with the timetable agenda. Uh, this next item has to do with liquor license ordinance and City Attorney Winko is going to present this. Now, I, uh, my understanding is we're not going to act on this tonight in terms of first reading, this is, uh, for our information and, and then for us to give some direction to the city, I would assume at next meeting, there would be an ordinance before us where there'd be first reading, public input, you know, that kind of thing, so.
Mr. President, commissioners, as you indicated, uh, this ordinance is before you, uh, this ordinance, uh, was drafted by Nate Gray with the TOSIC, who is representing the twenty-seven LLC. Uh, he has proposed, uh, this, uh, two versions of the revised ordinance, uh, one based upon a percentage basis and the second as an alternate, uh, to increase the actual amount of liquor license, licenses available to one individual person. So, uh, with that, I will turn it over to Attorney Gray to address the commission and present, uh, his proposed revisions.
Thank you. Uh, there's really not a whole lot more to add than that. Um, we kind of tried to come up with a couple of options based on comments from the commission last time, so we, uh, like Attorney Winko, we mentioned, we came up with two different options. Um, the first, preferred one ties it to the total amount of licenses outstanding, which we think kind of just takes care of the updated problem that occurs whenever you've got a, a set number of it is due to increase potentially. So that's our preferred option, we think it kind of takes care of a couple of different issues there, um, and then the other one is just very straightforward, update the number, um, kind of as a fallback, uh, option. Like I said, that's, that's not our preferred route, but just put that in there just in case it works and that tracks with that. So, but if there's any questions or comments or thoughts or guidance, you can give us for, for reacting, so we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, any feedback, uh, questions, comments? Mr. Kessel, are you?
I just have a quick question for Mr. Gray. On the second option, um, did you do some logic based on the number that was presented or was that arbitrary?
It was more or less arbitrary, it kind of worked out to the same as the thirty percent, so we just went back. Okay.
Well, just on the surface, I mean, uh, if I was to have this presented to the commission, I would prefer it be the second option with a whole number as opposed to a percentage per cell.
Yeah.
I don't know about the rest of you, but.
Mr. President, from a, uh, logistical and administrative perspective, I think it, uh, City Administrator Kessel has brought that up before, uh, about, uh, the, uh, running the necessary background checks and doing the, uh, legwork for that, uh, so I think that obviously would create more work for city officials, uh, on, on their end of things, uh, unless Attorney Gray has a, an idea of how to alleviate some of those concerns. I'm not sure any of you have discussed that, uh, like you said.
Not, not especially, um, as far as the administrative overhead burden, from my view, it seems like it's the same either route, because it's, we really could have the same number of liquor licenses and the same people owning interests, it's just how you calculate that number and what the number is, so I don't know that one option or the other really believes that issue.
Mr. President, any response to that? I think it depends on the amounts or the number of individuals that are submitting applications for liquor licenses. Uh, of course, if, if some of those individuals already have liquor licenses pending, that information would be available to the city commission to run those necessary checks. Uh, again, if you've got multiple owners with multiple interests, obviously those, those checks have to be ran. It's more burdens, I would say, for the city to make sure that all of those, uh, checks are run and, uh, that the information is being processed correctly. I have not personally done that, background checking or the process of doing that, so I can't speak fully to this, so I would, um, have to let Mr. Kessel read on that in particular.
The, every person who's listed as a owner, or whether that's, uh, has an interest or full, uh, we do a background check on. Um, so if, if in the end, there are seven or six owners applying for a license, we have to do a background check on each of those, um, and if it's a percentage interest, like, um, there could be more owners per license, that just would mean additional work, or we got, you know, in the end, there's less of a reason to not change. Uh, I think the commission rationale for, for changing or relieving the same, should be more predicated upon these, that's interest, uh, issues of, uh, utilization, issues of, of, the new rates regarding acquisition of product, um, and I think less about administrative burden, but there certainly will be more administrative burden when it comes to, um, an interest, if we recognize an interest, which may result in slight increase in liquor license fees and cost. Uh, I wouldn't be able to calculate a number for you, but I think it's reasonable to assume that there could be a increase in fees.
Does, I know this is a, a small change in the ordinance, it's just one word, so I should know the answer to this before I ask it, but I don't, can't remember. If, if we pass this ordinance with the number five, does that mean a large corporate entity like, um, a Walmart could have interest in five liquor licenses in the city of Dickinson?
Um, I believe they would treat it the same way as well, so I think they could. There is a special exemption for publicly traded companies who are kind of going to the same issue, that owners of less than five percent of Walmarts or companies like that is exempted from the, uh, background checks and, uh, with its own ownership.
I was, I was just going to ask that question, how do we check the big boxes out?
Well, I want to remind everybody that the liquor license is not in the name Walmart's and those are industries, I can't remember the exact title, so it isn't Walmart that's issued a liquor license, it's their subcontractor who's actually issuing the liquor license. So how do we check for that? It would be whoever's on the board directly, who will check every order, that's correct.
And so would that subcontractor own multiple, or have investments then in up to five?
That's correct.
Okay, right now they, right now they could do two.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
I don't think we've done a background investigation on every board member, say, the subcontract of Walmart. I think we did the background check of the individual that they stated was a resident of North Dakota, lived here so many years.
Commissioner Stein, I believe we did do a background on each of those. I recall a situation where I'm aware of, if you had a question, the real issue for us then is when you have multiple owners that have four of their actors, say, they're swallowing them, what if one of them has an issue? One of the club who still recommends to you to issue that license, where it gets a little bit fuzzy, so you find that, how do you define a four background check in that kind of scenario? Those are the types of things we do on the percentage side that could get a hundred percent.
Remind me again, we have 18 liquor licenses?
I knew that's accurate.
Eighteen.
Eighteen that are represented in this.
Right. So with the 30%, then you're rounding it up to six.
Do you go to the nearest whole number, would you round it down to five?
I think we, yeah, we had to round it up to the nearest, round to the nearest whole number, so it's one, six, that goes up.
Okay, so I guess it would be five, and then they're asking for five. I think in either way, five seems to be a lot versus 18. It's almost a third of the liquor licenses, so I'm not leaning towards the thirty, the percentage or the whole number, but I think in either case, for my taste, the number's too big of a percentage or too big of a whole number. Right now, I know our rule is two, I could definitely go higher than the two, but not going to almost triple it.
Well, I'd like to ask those of you who have been studying this more, what's the reason for the limitation? What are we trying to accomplish, whether it's five or three or whatever it may be? I mean, I, I can come up with a couple of answers for that, but I don't know if they're the same answers everybody else would have. Why are we limiting, limiting?
Commissioner Jackson, obviously, it was before my time, but I think one of the premises for the limitation is dealing with the monopolization of markets. Obviously, the city, in the back of its mind, can, for the health and welfare and safety and benefit for the civilians, limit the amount of liquor licenses as a total, and in taking that, moving that step forward, obviously has the discretion of limiting the amount of liquor licenses and as to who receives those liquor licenses. But I think in this neighborhood, City Administrator Castle, I think a lot of that limitation deals with the need to address the monopolization of market.
Restricting price competition, possibly.
Possibly, yes.
I think the main issue for us to decide tonight is, do you want them to bring the ordinance for first reading with the percentage in or the whole number? And then you can, you'll have the next three meetings at least to debate the merits of whether there should be any controls or any limits, or.
I prefer the whole number.
I'd prefer the whole number.
And we can start with the whole number, you may end up with a percentage as you go through the process, but, I mean, we need to start with one form, and I, you brought two to us, and they're pretty easy to understand.
I feel more comfortable with the whole number, whether, you know, anywhere between two and the five than I would the percentage. I mean, we're just a couple away from a percentage where it goes up to six right now. If we're going at 30%, we get 20 licenses, and then it'll get up to six. Limiting the five is more in line with what I think we would need to address a situation where there'd be a multiple ownership in licenses. And if it comes up where, I just don't see us issuing a whole lot more licenses here in the near future until we get another 3,000 per license, but, you know, like I said, I'm comfortable in between the two and the five.
I just don't see the monopoly argument. I don't, I don't see them pricing themselves out of the market when they're big boxes down. So to me, I agree with the percentage. I just, I don't agree with the monopoly argument. They're businessmen, they're going to be competitive, especially with the big box.
Well, there's, there's four that said they'd prefer to see the whole number. Why don't you bring it to the commission at the next meeting for first reading with the whole number, five? And what I would assume we're going to do is, you'll have one meeting with first reading, take your public input, there'll be a second meeting that'll be public hearing, no vote on second reading, and the third meeting, unless there's a ton of public input, you know, at that second meeting, you'd go to a third meeting where you're going to act on the second reading and final passage. So that would, that would be the process. Good? Mr. Castle?
I have one more question for Mr. Gray.
Sure.
Not about the process. One of the things that is coming to my thought is, the scenario exists, if we go to five or some other number, that, that an individual could be part of multiple corporations and, or have an ownership interest in multiple corporation, five directly. If, if that person has a, what I'll call a trigger on our background check, does that then mean that each of those five liquor licenses are not issued? How do you deal with a sketchy background check, when you have multiple owners or potentially multiple licenses that they're involved in?
Luckily, you guys are on that side of the table after the term that night. I think, you know, in looking at this, it strikes me as hugely discretionary act on the commission's part, whether to grant these or not, and I think that falls within that discretion. It's no, no easy answer, I'm sorry.
But, but that is a, that is a very valid question. Let's, let's just assume that this passed with five, and so you had an individual who has an interest in five different licenses, and turns up with, you know, a bad background check that is bad enough, serious enough, that the commission's going to say can't be involved. That puts the onus on each of those five organizations to deal with that person, or you could lose your liquor license.
Right, yeah, and that's, that's what I was going to say.
And so.
From my perspective, yeah, we'd have to deal with that, each individual entity.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be the city's problem at that point, it'd be each of those corporations or partnerships' problem, you know, that you probably have to buy that person out. We have that problem now, it's just limited to two. If this passes away, that isn't.
Three. You're a holding company.
But that's why we, government moves kind of slow, so we get a chance to talk about these what ifs, and we'll, we'll do this over the course of the next three meetings, but we have a starting point, though.
We can even go a lot farther than this here, and I don't know how far you want to go, the guy wants to take this here, but maybe there's something later on, but how do we handle an individual that becomes questionable after they have a license? We've never talked about that. A person already has a liquor license and something questionable comes up, how do we handle that? Do we, do we do every year?
Commissioner Stein, how that would happen now is if, if somebody was clear at the time of issuance, we issue these annually, so we do background checks annually, so if something happened, DUI, something of that nature, that obviously triggers, and we have to consider that. So their liquor licenses are in jeopardy annually.
So we do the background check annually, every?
Yes, yes, we do. Thankfully, we haven't had them issued. I think it's not better than that.
Okay.
Okay.
So it'll, next meeting, you guys will have it on the agenda. Okay, it's 5:35, we've got a public hearing on a rezoning petition, and City Attorney Gus and City Planner Hadley are going to introduce this item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Request is for maximum development of the request on rezoning petition from similar family to a land area involving the project and the mixed-use development, including a multifamily, private, and professional office space. The planning permission purchase request and full payment to St. Joseph's Hospital side is for the quarter, and they recommend approval. There's a number of conditions listed that they need to meet, and also the government agreement is on this, and staff will recommend approval of this.
I have a question on, since we started on the budget, is, first speaking about that, is that ordinance 1591, or will this one be 1591? Is it the one we act on first?
I thought it was 1592, just because of the other one's wrong.
You're, you're not an attorney, though.
I would agree with that, Mr. President, so 1591 can be the initial budget, and then 1593 would be the resulting decision.
Okay. Are you okay with that, too, Ms. Gus?
Yes.
Okay. So this is 1592. So at this point, if there's anyone in the audience that wants to comment on proposed ordinance 1592, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Is no one that wishes to comment on 1592? Are there any comments or questions by city commissioners or other city staff? Now, is there a motion regarding the first reading of ordinance 1592?
I'll move to a group of the audience.
Second.
We have the motion to approve, and the second, any discussion? Hearing now will vote, Mr. Altman's.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We're back to the budget.
Thank you, Attorney Johnson. The next section that I wanted to go over this afternoon is proprietary fund. This is a $20 million, 544,000 dollar budget, and one of the things that I just received this morning, or that we just recently received tonight, with the utility rate survey that we just received from Nexa and A2S on the different rates in Montana, excuse me, in the darkened weather.
They're from Montana.
I used, so that's, that's where that first sheet is in here, that took a monthly residential water utility bill, that took a monthly residential wastewater utility bill, and took a monthly residential total utility bill, which includes water, wastewater, and stormwater. I just included this in there for your reference at this point. Moving on to page one in this proprietary area is our total proprietary funds. First of all, what I'm representing here, obviously, the expense side of this is what's included in the ordinance, so all these numbers, you know, the expense side are in the ordinance. The revenue side, at this point, what you're seeing right here represents absolutely no rate increases at all, okay, on the sheet. So as you can see on the upper left-hand side there, the 2016 budget income is 15.3 billion dollars, and our expenses are at 20.5 million dollars, so we have a deficit for proprietary funds that I'll talk about here, about 5.1 million dollars for 2016. Starting on page two is our water distribution fund. One of the concerns and issues that we kind of have right now is, we just received our numbers for August, and those numbers came in extremely high, so we want to rerun a lot of that on the revenue side of ours here with projections on the revenues, because the numbers have come in extremely high, and I think that might change some of the revenue numbers that are included in here, so we want to put those in here and see what they are doing. At this point, the numbers are here where our projections are based off of past knowledge and also the utilization to date through the end of July. We are showing under the water distribution fund for consumption, our budget is, was at 4.3 million dollars, and we're looking at about a $4 million budget for 2016, so a decrease of about $323,000. The other, so on the, on the expense side, down to the bottom there, as you can see, our water costs, we're projecting to, our budget for 2015 was almost 3.2 million dollars, and we're projecting that number of water costs at being at 4.6 million dollars. That represents, we had in our 2015, I believe, a 12 cent increase for Southwestern Water for 2015, that rate actually increased by 33 cents, and they are projecting a 33 cent increase again in 2016. So these numbers of that increases, and that number of water costs there are due to those increases.
I, I would imagine our 2016 actual water cost is going to run well ahead of that budgeted number of 3.2, 3.4.
The 2015.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So that being said, in our water costs, we're looking at about a $583,000 deficit overall between our projected revenues and expenses.
And are we running our debt service through our proprietary funds, or did we set up a separate fund for debt service?
We are currently, that's one thing I want to talk about.
Okay, I'll wait there.
But currently, yes, they are run through, you know, the majority of these are in our leasehold.
That's why you have a big deficit so far.
That, that's correct, that's correct. So on the, on page three, what I did here is to try to balance this out a little bit this way, if we did have to have any kind of rate increases, and I looked at the consumption, the meter charges, base rate, and also the connection fees, the water access charges, over on the right-hand sides that are bold and in green, I added a 10% revenue increase in each of those areas, and that's what we would need to pretty much break the water distribution fund to make it whole.
And that would still be carrying a full debt service load, then?
The debt service you'll see is mainly in the wastewater, you'll see that.
Okay.
That's, that's what we're.
That's right, yeah.
To discuss.
Yeah.
So again, I'd like to spend more time, as we can spend more time with the work services are up, and look at those new projection, which I might look at and see. All right, moving on to the wastewater collection and then wastewater pipeline. President Johnson, as we pointed out, this is, this is where we're carrying that debt service, and the majority of it, if we go down to the very bottom, under capital expenses, here's what we're seeing, a 5.6 million dollar of capital expenses, and again, mainly all that is our SRF bond payments that are coming, that we're going to start making payments on right now. So, you know, our revenues are coming in right now, we're projecting about 3.7 million dollars, and we're looking at about 8.6 million dollars of expenses, including all those capital expenditures. So we have to look at possibility of other funding to. So we have to look at possibility of other funding to offset some of those capital expenses. One of the issues that we have, the numbers for wastewater on the revenue side of the house are pretty consistent with 2014, excuse me, 2015 numbers are pretty consistent with what we've been saying in the past. The budget numbers in 2015 were projected at being a lot higher, that we are not going to reach those amounts. I might ask Mr. Zeroff to help me out in this area, explain.
I guess a couple of places that were included in the 15 budget. One was, of course, the addition of Southard, which hasn't connected yet. The addition of the Dakota River Refinery, we included that as a revenue with their monthly charge of base rate, but that actually is a credit of the overbuild of the system. So that was inadvertently put into the revenue side and that's considered half a million to, or more, that we thought would be on the revenue side that is actually a credit. I can't recall what else there was.
We projected 300 hookups in the first one.
Oh, yeah, one of the other issues was we projected 300 hookups in our sewer rate increase proposal to cover the debt service and that's where we came up with the sewer access charges that were increased considerably. Like right now, we're at about 160 services, so, and 300 last year, we were real conservative because we were up to 7800. So that's one of the issues. Also, some of the SAC charges that even in 150 that we currently have this year weren't funded, didn't pay the exact SAC charge because with their development agreement previously, their previous rate was in there. So even that 100 and some connection fees didn't get the projected SAC charges because they had a previous development fee of under that. So there were multiple items that has ended up with the reduction in revenue.
So let me see if I understand. At this point, you have, the page we're looking at, page four, there's no rate increase over from 2015 to current year?
That's correct.
And our deficit, my eyes aren't so good, is about $4.4 million at this point.
About 4.8.
4.8?
Yes.
Okay. If, just for discussion purposes, if we increased every single one of those revenue numbers by 10%, that brings us $378,000.
That's correct.
So we'd have a deficit of 4.4 if we did that.
That's right.
So we're not going to be able to erase that deficit with revenue increases.
I totally agree.
I imagine this group would like us to raise the liquor tax. It seems to me the only way you can do this is there has to be a sizable transfer from oil impact funds to here.
Currently, right now, we're projected at the end of 2016 having a balance there of just under $8 million. And that's if we fully fund everything that we have planned for 15 and 16. That will give us a reserve of about, it's about 7.8, almost about 7.9 million dollars.
And you need $4.5 million a year probably would be a reasonable number.
That's correct.
So that would, over a two-year time, that would pretty much eliminate the reserve. Do you have an odd, do you have other alternatives besides oil impact funds?
No, I think that's the revenue stream that we have come around and injected to pay this deficit. We're all open to dealing. The main impact from this stage is the first priority is debt service. So that is our number, of course, use those on the debt service.
Yeah, because a rate increase while bringing more money just is, you couldn't increase the rates high enough to pay for the full load here.
I'm pretty ready to elect.
I think we'd be recalled before we had to worry about reelection.
So President Johnson, what I'd like to do is for the revenue side, this is, we're working the plan with, you know, see administrative personnel and Mr. Zeroff and the planner to show how we can offset those revenues and what that would mean to the total cost side.
And I think this year too, with some of the cost projected, we included a lot of the engineers or consultants projected electricity cost and we were conservative. The chemical costs, which we're conservative, all the legislation, which is a high number and the plant, but this will be our first full year running the plant, so I think really we can narrow down those costs considerably, I'm hoping, for next year too.
How much are your consumption numbers being affected by the fact that we were on restrictions for a few years last year? And I think we have been this year, right? I don't remember how many days that was. Mr. Wlesky said that the August numbers were a lot different. I think it was August when we had those restrictions last year.
Right, and it's been a wet year, but our water side and wastewater side, August is considerably higher than the previous month, considerably higher.
Well, we have, you know, two more meetings to, before we reach the final number. So you have some time to work on this, but again, this is really the best information we've had on the proprietary funds probably ever, so. And we knew, you know, that we were going to have a deficit here. We just didn't have enough oil impact money to pay for the project totally upfront, so we're forced to borrow. But I'm assuming we'll continue to receive oil impact money for several years. I think the legislature understands that communities like Dickinson and Williston and Watford City taking on debt and that debt service, future debt service is supposed to, at least a portion of it is supposed to come from oil impact funds.
We need to keep the pressure in our to against it.
Well, again, you, I mean, if you had to put this all on the back of the rate payer, we would have the highest rates in the state by a long, long way.
Yeah, Wes, I agree. There's other communities that take on, like that, or not that they owe you. So just moving on, the last two years, the stormwater fund, you know, we're looking at pretty much breaking even with 254,000 and expenses at 251,000. So don't see any issues or anything in this area, any type of increases there. And then also on the solid waste fund, it's a couple of things that I mentioned here. We're looking at revenues about 4.8 million, expenses about 4.6 million, with a positive balance of 242,000. One of the things that I did do and that I wanted to point out to see if it's, if it was agreeable on that, we did talk about administrative fees that are coming into the general fund, still these proprietary accounts. I did include the administrative fee from the solid waste fund, it's 10% to 12%. So, and that's represented in the administrative fees there, a 5,000 dollars in the first line under the law for the expenses. And that would conclude 2016.
Okay, so this is ordinance 1591. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on the budget, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we hear your comments. Anyone wish to comment on the budget? Is no one from the public that wishes to comment on the budget? How about city commissioners or other city staff? Any other comments you'd like to make or questions?
Mr. President, I think it's a good budget that we put together. I know we had recommendations from the employees, for extra employees and so on, and I think we've done a pretty good job in getting them the extra help that they need. You know, a lot of this was done before we knew that the gas tax revenue, oil revenue, was going down. And yet, you know, outside of the water and wastewater and so on, you know, it doesn't surprise me that much. It's like you said, we kind of assumed a lot of this here would be happening about three, four, or five months ago, you know, so I feel it's a pretty good budget. Taxpayers aren't going to see much of a difference at all.
I agree, Mr. Steiner. That, you raised some good points. I think maybe you could tell us again, what are the additional positions? I'm thinking the overall wage and salary scale is going up one and a half percent in this budget?
That's correct, a total increase.
Okay, and how many new positions that weren't authorized for current 2015 are here? Do you recall offhand?
I don't remember that number offhand because it's also offset by some decreases in certain departments as well.
Right, we eliminated some engineering positions.
And asset position. It does include an increase in our fire department of two, one in January, one in July. Includes a police officer, dispatcher, includes summer help in forestry. It also includes help in the building ground. We require a lot of responsibility in terms of land we have to take care of, so those last couple are direct questions of that. And also structure, if you bring in a public safety center online, you need someone to maintain the inside and the outside of those structures. So those, for those purposes, IT, if you need some assistance, the amount of units that they have to maintain is just tremendous. And then you add, I don't even know how many modded cables there are in that public safety center, but it's amazing. So IT does get another lot of people. Those are the ones I remember way off the top of my head. So Wes, the others that I may have missed, anything else? We can bring a summary if an exhibition game, we have that.
Mr. Jackson, any comments?
Well, first of all, again, really good job and everybody's saying it, but it's just so easy to understand and such a good feeling to have our arms around it. Good job. My comment isn't so much on the budget itself, but as I look at this budget, I see numbers that tell me we have a really good opportunity as we finish this budget to put together a very simple and vivid portrayal of what we're up against for our legislators. And it's not too early to do that, I don't think. We're going to need to rely on oil revenue in the future, our debt. And to me, when you look at 15 to 16 budget differences, it really portrays that really well, what we're up against. So I would hope that after we're finished with the budget, maybe we can do something like that, be a little preemptive.
I think the information you've given us too, in this format, gives each of us an opportunity to spend the next two weeks going through this and I would encourage you, if you have questions or comments, that you contact Mr. Wlesky and Mr. Kessel directly and talk to them about it. And, you know, if we're going to make any changes, it would be good to make those at the public hearing meeting as opposed to the second reading meeting. Not that we can't make changes there, but the sooner we do it, the better.
President Johnson, I think the reason why this budget was easier is because we worked with the managers or department head, they did a nice job, they came prepared, they were reasonable in their expectations and that made putting this together a whole lot easier. It's been recognized by Wes and the rest of the, I would also like to recognize Rocky Moria in the audience, who's also done a nice job, also a new staff member. So between the two of them, I think we agree with him, that Moria's also been very helpful in the process. And they, we had purchased software to do a different kind of budget this year and we weren't able to do that, we will next year. So, you know, we use the term, I was stuck in exile last year, they were as well and they executed much better than I did on the budget process, so good job.
Okay, any other comments? Is there a motion regarding the first reading of 1591?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Or second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second, any other discussion? Hearing now will vote, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Move to item C. This is a change to the liquor license ordinance and City Attorney Goss will introduce this.
This ordinance, as you say, goes through legislative changes allowing on sale, liquor sales to begin at 11 a.m. on Sundays, that would be for sale of alcohol to be consumed on premise. Off sale of the sales would not be allowed until noon. The language mirrors that in the state code and states that.
Okay, thank you. You've heard our introduction and explanation. If there's anyone from the public who would like to comment on proposed ordinance 1593, you may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anyone wish to comment on 1593? Is no one that wishes to comment? Any comments by city commissioners? There's no comments? Is there a motion regarding first reading of this ordinance?
I do have some comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I just don't see a need to do this. State law may have been changed. I just, I just don't see a need to take us to 2 a.m. in our liquor establishments.
Do we have a choice?
Yes.
Well, I assume we have a choice. This isn't one of those things mandated by the state.
My feelings aren't quite as strong about the 11 a.m. on Sunday. You know, I don't know what our police department feels about the troubles we have in establishments around that time of night and I can't believe they would be much better between 1 and 2 I just think it's really unnecessary.
Chief Dosinger, he has some comments?
Good evening, Mr. President, and with the commission, these changes were supposed to reflect the legislative change opportunity to Sunday opening and closing. Please turn it now into a closing hour.
Have a request by anybody from the industry.
But we don't have to be compliant with state law on this.
No, we can be more restrictive than state law.
So this would be just consistent with state law? If we did nothing, we would not be out of compliance?
Right.
Correct.
I'd say that no one's brought it up or anything. I mean, it's just...
So we don't have a compliance issue?
I think the issue resides in place that doesn't want to serve on a lot of level or noon on Sunday particularly for the crowd. You know, I'm okay with moving that back to eleven a.m. That's not a vacation for the police department, but we do have an issue with the two a.m.
And we can make the change for the eleven a.m. and keep the one a.m.
Should we do that?
Yeah, until somebody asks to, but before, said they'd like it open until two. There hasn't been that request. The only request was to move up the eleven a.m.
Did we have that request?
We didn't.
We could pass first reading with the way it is, but have you bring it to us in second reading form with the way the chief just said.
I understand the police department probably doesn't have a problem with the eleven a.m. on Sunday, but I'm not going to vote for that either.
Okay.
So you know. We have lots of opportunities to drink beer.
I, I'm thinking I'm the same way as you, Mr. Jackson. I'm comfortable with the way it is now myself.
I don't think this vote will be unanimous, but it's all right. Are you ready to, I mean, we can?
Sure.
I look at it, the state operates the way the rest of the state operates. We're going back on the premise again. Everybody operates different than Dickinson. Goes back to the cigarette thing. We're the only ones that are different with the cigarette. We're going to be the only ones, I guess, different with this. Other cities operate under this premise, and they don't seem to have issues with it. But...
We are going to get some public comment.
Yes, I'm sorry that I...
That's fine.
It's like very hard for this part of downtown. I didn't realize that this ordinance was reflecting the two a.m. I mean, the state has had a two a.m. opening for several years, and none of us, our owners, ever, you know, visiting would then have any desire to go to that two a.m. You know, the eleven a.m., you know, let's flip the coin on that one, but the two a.m., unless somebody would come forward and request it, I would still, my feeling would still be negative on that.
And the eleven a.m. on Sunday, you really?
Either way.
Anybody else from the public want to comment?
I would just make a comment. I guess that if the state changed the ruling to the eleven a.m., there was a request and a consensus to go that way. Just because we would change it to eleven a.m. in our ordinance doesn't mandate that we are, has to open up at eleven a.m. So we are offering that option, but that doesn't mean, you know, it sounds like the ASWR may or may not.
I mean, right now, we can open at eight a.m. any day of the week, and then Sunday, we can open at three.
Right. So I don't think it changes the course of history or the course of drinking. It might change it one hour to be aligned with stated. It's still going to be up to the individual bars whether they do that or not.
You know, I think that eleven a.m. is more for the restaurants, sports bars that are doing the bloody merry breakfast or, you know, football game or whatnot, breaking into the football game and stuff like that, which...
I think so.
Which is a good draw for them.
Yeah.
Why don't we do this? I, I came in here thinking this was a compliance issue. We had to change to be compliant, so I had a different perspective. I've learned something. I think we've all learned a little more. Why don't we not act on this at all? Rewrite it to where it stays the way we have it today, except for the eleven a.m. on Sunday, and bring that to us for first reading at the next meeting. That would be a little cleaner, and plus it gives the public a chance to think this over, and maybe we'll hear more public comment at the next meeting. It isn't something that we have to rush and do.
Right.
Does that sound like a concep... Good, good way to go. So we'll just refuse to take action on it now, and we bring it back in a little different form then. Okay, let's go to item D. And this has to do with the North Dakota State Water Commission, and Mr. Kessel's going to introduce this.
Thank you, President Johnson. The North Dakota State Water Commission provided a series of grants to one of the impacted communities several years ago, about two years ago. And we were recipient of that grant. It was in the amount of eighteen point four million dollars. Since that time, since the award of those grants, the State Water Commission has adopted a policy of reimbursement that includes reimbursement for engineering, for construction, construction administration. Those numbers were different that they adopted than when the grant was awarded. So what they've decided to do is to make sure that they're in compliance. Surprise, surprise, they've offered to give us some more money. What they means is a five percent difference between construction that was not recognized on the original award will now be recognized and results in another one point five million dollars to the city of Dickinson. So we recommend that we accept the change and the, and the one point five million dollars in grant awards accepted by the State Water Commission.
Thank you. You've heard Mr. Kessel's introduction, explanation, and recommendation. This is actually an amendment to our agreement with them, and we would be asked to, to approve this amendment or disapprove it. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion regarding this item?
I would make a motion to accept the new agreement.
The second.
Yeah, the motion, the second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We go down to item E. This is a consideration to act on a contract with McAuliffe Kellogg regarding the landfill expansion, and Mr. Kessel will introduce this also.
Thank you, President Johnson. The, as you're all aware, we outlined in the past presentations and such that our landfill is filling up much faster late than has previously. Because of this, we are comfortably close to the amount of years that we predict we can reasonably accept landfill or solid waste, excuse me, solid waste in our landfill. You know, we have options that are available to us that would include, you know, not servicing the surrounding twenty-plus communities that we do today and just focus on serving our community. That is not our preference. We want to continue to be a regional city. We want to continue to be able to provide similar services as we have in the past. But in order to do that, we have to expand the size of our landfill and make sure that we have adequate reserves when that requirement is needed. So we require additional land surrounding our landfill to do that. We don't own that land, so we have appraisal completed on that land so we can make an offer to the landowners themselves. The contract then that is before you would engage McAuliffe Kellogg to assist us with that land acquisition. He's worked with the owner in the past for about two years or more. He's aware of our desire to acquire the land. He requested that we give appraisal. We concluded that appraisal and make that offer to him. If that appraisal and offer that we make is not accepted, the unfortunate reality is we may have to go through the immaterial name process to acquire the land. It is a very technical process and one we hope to avoid, but I think it's a future that we have to at least consider. This contract would engage McAuliffe to help us through that process. As you may know, today is Ms. Mauro's last day in her capacity as the city administrator, the city attorney, and she would be the primary on the contract that's before you, along with Chuck Peterson, who would be secondary. The rates of reimbursements are included within, and we are recommending to engage McAuliffe. I should mention that I also did contact an additional firm, Bismarck, to conduct this kind of work based on some recommendations of friends that I have, and it is my recommendation that we engage McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. You've heard his introduction and his recommendation. Do you have any comments or questions for him? Not? Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'm moving to approve the contract.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We move down to item F, which is reports. And Ms. Goss, are you going to start out here?
Yes.
Okay.
City staff has been working on creating provisions in the code to allow commercial use of sidewalks within the downtown commercial district. The use is covered in the outdoor patio areas, merchandise sales, pedestrian signs. The ordinance would create a permitting process requiring site plans to ensure the proper amount of clear space for pedestrian traffic, park cleanup and maintenance, and proof insurance to cover the risk of any injury since it is a public rightway. These things are currently prohibited in the code except through event permits, and we wanted to get feedback from the commission before presenting this ordinance in first reading.
Any reaction to this?
I guess when I read it, I'm just wondering what the involvement of the downtown merchants has been in the first draft? If others have seen it, if they were part of the drafting?
No, they were not part of the drafting. This was mainly for the permits open in the public codes.
I know we'll be able to get their input in the public hearing process.
Did we model it after another city, another community's ordinance?
We did. This is taken from Bismarck and...
Bismarck.
Did we get a request for this? Is this how it came about, or no?
No, it was just, we have some instances of these kind of uses and felt that it might be something that would be coming up more quickly, especially when you guys have it downtown and that would be...
Have we had conflicts, problems with this issue?
We have existing situations that if this was adopted, would be noncompliant on the state by commission.
Okay, the ones that would be not, have we had complaints, or?
Yes.
We have?
We have some complaints, mostly with regard to clear space for walking. There's impediments within the sidewalk right now. You know, the clear space issue is, I personally like to see the use of sidewalks in the manner in which some of our downtown businesses are using them. They're using them for outdoor seating. They're using them for things such as that. And in trying to encourage that use, there should be, at least in my thought process, a process in place that makes sure that everybody is recognized. And those people who are wanting to use the sidewalks for purposes other than dining or jogging also need to be respected. My hope, and what I see downtown is a renaissance happening. It's a margin, yes, where I love it. It's investing a lot of funds. We see that in Brick House. We're seeing a lot of people put a lot of money in downtown, and I think that we're going to see the response by the community in using the downtown in a different way than they are today via live drive events that are going on. And so I anticipate that we're going to see additional conflict potentially down the road. Being proactive in this situation is our best interest.
When I read it, it seemed like a lot of rules.
And is that?
It's a lot to keep track of, and how do you know if you're complying? Couldn't we condense it down to much fewer rules?
We could certainly take another shot, and this is exactly the input that we need is what your thoughts are. Maybe we are too early in the process.
And I didn't see red flags necessarily, but I don't think I'm in a position that I appreciate red flags that might be there. That's why I asked about getting merchants involved, maybe before it even comes to us. I said getting merchants involved, downtown merchants involved before it even comes back to us. And again, I know we'll have a public hearing, but...
We could take that to the Downtown Association, pay them a little bit, and have them have some discussions. We could invite them to take a look at that time and discursive, get them involved.
Maybe there is a way to simplify it.
Any other comments on the, this proposed ordinance? All right. Let you two continue. I don't know who has what here, so...
I'm going to have one as well. So city staff received a request to provide an honorary meeting to establish city street recognition of veterans, anticipating additional requests. The city staff developed an honorary street sign policy. Honorary street signs would be signs posted above the current city signs to recognize or honor certain individuals or groups without changing the official name of the street. They would be a different color than the normal street signs, we can differentiate them. And we have the policy and application of their laws.
So does that require action by the city commission?
Because you are not approving, or not approving the policy. Who's going to determine the criteria? I mean, is there going to be a panel that votes with names okay, or is it going to change to, or not change to, on in honor of?
Yes. Yes, there's criteria for review. It's historical and/or cultural influence of the applicant, group of significant lineage and or association to the city, clear geographical relationship to the streets that they're wanting the sign to be placed on. Must be known to be a good moral character and clearly provide community or public contribution made by the honorary. They would fill out that information on the application, and this would go through. City administration would review that and then through the sign. city administration, would review that, and then through the sign.
Anybody have any objections?
You know, I think used sparingly, it'd be fine. The only thing that comes to mind is emergency services, you know, and somebody calls in and says, "There's a fire," and that, is that...
We actually make that part of the policy as well, that we would coordinate with emergency services to let them know where these signs would be, so that they would have that.
The next item on the agenda, hearing your opposition, is the status of the city engineering position. We received two applications during the existing process. Due to the dirt of applicants, we're going to be extending the deadline once again for this position. We'll be targeting markets that are different than the ones that we targeted already, hopefully that will generate additional applications for the position. As you may have noticed, in the 2016 budget, we did include some dollars to engage, to continue to engage K O J in a contract for engineering services that will extend to the, what we anticipate being the first quarter of 2016. We have not accrued funds to fund the contract after that. I do anticipate also changes to the contract. Currently, that's for two individuals, and I'm not sure that that will be necessary in the future because one of the other positions that is in project is a project manager position. I think that could be actually served by, and not need a second position in the contract. So I have had preliminary discussions with K O J. We will bring a contract language to the city commission for your view and approval. And it's just an update to let you know that we're continuing to search for a city engineering. The next item is the Sixth Street roadway extension agreement. There's been a lot of discussion over the course of several years with regard to a roadway that is just north of Danforth, Homers. This was a, is a private drive. At this time, we did maintain this roadway for quite some time. Unaware, I think that it was being maintained by city staff. Once the knowledge that it is a private road, we stopped maintaining that roadway, I'm going to say three years ago. That has resulted in the property owners, of course, they like that service, and they've asked us to continue that service. We've said that we would, as long as they dedicate an easement to the city, so it is a public drive, and they pay for the cost and improve that roadway so that we can continue to maintain. They are real to doing exactly that, and so we, I think, engineer improvements, we talk more about the specifics of the roadway and then I, that is our intent is to dumb that hack.
Thank you. If everyone's familiar with this, it's the roadway behind Danforth. What we're proposing is to not build this to a city standard. We don't have the room to do that. We need to buy out properties. So we convert a 25-foot, what is a private easement today, to dedicated street right of way, and put a one and three-quarter to two-inch overlay on it to bring it up to some maintainable standard, and then take that roadway over as a public street. Essentially, what we'd be working within would be a, probably a good-sized alleyway, really. Twenty-five feet is a little wider than our standard alleys, but not nearly what we would have for a public street. But we anticipate, you know, that the traffic that's using it today will still use it, but this way, our public services, public works departments will be able to come out, maintain snow on there, do potter patching similar to any other street, because we do have fire, ambulance, garbage service that still needs to use that street. So I think this will really clean up that area and spend a longstanding problem.
The last thing that I have is these improvements will only be made once the cash is proceeded by the city. This is a special assessment district. We're not asking to fund this project, the property owners will fund it, and then we would go and make the improvements. Are there any questions? I'm not hearing any. I'll move on to the next and last, the fourth item, and that is the Dakota Dinosaur Museum. We've been in negotiation with the Leagues. They intend to, for this to be their last season operating the Dakota Dinosaur Museum. They've, they've done this for a great many years, and they want to retire. They want to go to Colorado and enjoy themselves. So in order for us to maintain a dinosaur museum in Dickinson, they own several of the exhibits. Some are owned by the federal government and are on loan, and we've been negotiating with them to maintain a good portion of those exhibits here so that we can operate dinosaur museum. The current thought process is that Mr. Ingram would accept the responsibility of the dinosaur museum, who would have to hire a geologist in order to help us with curating the fossils that would become our asset as a city. And to do that, we have some people in the audience from the Geological Survey and the U S Forest Service who can make comment. We'll be, our intent to take over the curation of those fossils. And I'm not sure if anybody from the Forest Service or the Geological Survey would like to address the city commission on the difficulty or the ease of that process, but there's, I think, about 150 different fossils that are currently owned by the federal government that are either on display or housed at the existing facility.
Hello, Commissioner, Mr. Spears. My name is John Kenny. I'm the deputy grassland supervisor for the Dakota Dinosaur Grasslands. As you're probably aware, we have a agreement with the Geological Survey to maintain, curate, maintain, and basically inventory all those fossils that we have on loan over here to Dakota Dinosaur Museum. We would like to see that continue, so we would like to somehow support that those fossils stay at their consent in a museum, under the proper care of a paleontologist or geologist, whatever you need to place. But right now, you know, the responsibility rests on their shoulders. We've got them on loan, and they're in agreement. So whatever that looks like in the future for the city, we'd certainly like to entertain that. I've brought to my staff our public affairs officer, she's also our partnership coordinator, and our resources staff officer, the paleo program falls under Karen Bev's A O. So we're serious about this. So in the future, we would like to entertain some kind of agreement that's going to allow us to, in the end, keep those fossils on display for the public. So whatever that looks like for all of you, I'm sure that we can work something out for the best interest of the American people.
Thank you. I'd also like to mention that Ms. Melby is here representing the Dakota Dinosaur Museum and the Leagues. Can you add a question as well?
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. That's true, that after 22 years, the Leagues are going to be, and the Dakota Dinosaur Museum is going to be closing. They closed actually yesterday. And so some of the requirements that the Leagues are asking for is the Dakota Dinosaur Museum is actually their name, and so they don't want to transfer that name. But the Dakota Dinosaur Museum owns a lot of the specimens. We just heard about the federal fossil specimens, the federal fossil specimens that are, that were found on federal forest lands and that therefore are owned by, actually, the Smithsonian who licenses certain entities in the state of North Dakota to actually handle them. And so that's only a minor, minor portion of what's actually at the Dakota Dinosaur Museum. So the Leagues are interested in having an orderly transition to entities, you know, to whatever entities that are available to continue to display the specimens in the manner, you know, in the high-quality manner that they have done so within the last 22 years. So we have been negotiating, and we're still ongoing in the negotiations for everything but the name, Dakota. We want to remove that, that name from, from what's presently there. Other than that, yes, the, some of the federal fossils are leaving Dickinson temporarily, but if we can make some arrangements that they are secured in Dickinson, that they may be brought back. But our federal agents have been, have been there today in the Dickinson Dinosaur or the Dakota Dinosaur Museum and have been removing some of those fossils. And they've been doing some heavy lifting as well. If there are any questions that I can entertain on behalf of the Leagues, they've done some marvelous work in the last 22 years, but they're tired, and they closed the museum yesterday with a lot of trepidation, with a lot of, a lot of anticipation of what the future is going to mean for the two of them, but also with hopes that the quality will continue. Any questions?
Just a couple more comments. The value, it's hard to place a value on fossils of this nature. There's about 18,000 specimen, 150 or so are heavily, but the rest are owned by the Leagues themselves. We would not be negotiating for all of those specimens. We're negotiating for all of the ones that are currently on display, especially those that have a huge importance to this area, and the area being North Dakota, Montana, South Dakota, that. The Leagues have asked that the remaining dollars that are over the city by Dakota Dinosaur Museum, presumably would be living, so they'll pay back. It's about $35,000, just under that hundred, in exchange for the gifts that they would make, which are far in excess of that amount. But it does, I want to be clear, that operating the museum at this time does have some impacts to our existing building, the museum. They are located in the same building, they are separated by a wall. They anticipate preliminarily that that wall will come down and that the two museums would operate as one. And that does pose some issues, because the Dakota Dinosaur Museum, you pay to enter and do those exhibits, you don't in the open museum. So there's some definite philosophical issues that will have to be worked through in the new version of the dinosaur museum, whatever that is, in the open museum. Places like this are obviously making money, it's kind of like a swimming pool in Park Park. You offer a service because the public wants it, because the public enjoys it, and it's a reflection on us as a community. But they do it at a deficit, and we just have to be comfortable with what that deficit will be in terms of what's cultural work in our community. So we're going to be working through that, and the business plan, the business model that we're going to be confident in the dinosaur museum, the new, the open museum. But I, I'm very supportive of this transfer. I think the Leagues are being fair in terms of the exhibits and the dollar value of those exhibits, that they want to be behind, and as long as we're willing to continue the tradition, I'd like to see it.
And you're receiving in excess of, by any one of the proposals, in excess of 650 to close to a million, and those federal fossils, the T-Rex and some of the other fossils were, when they were, they were valued at the time that they were put into collection. That is not the fair market value. One of the T-Rex, for instance, I think Mr. Leakey put it in at $20,000, and now it can go for upwards of $200,000. So the definition of fair market value is what a reasonable person would pay for the property under the arrest or compulsion to buy, and that is not what the dollar value figures that you're going to be seeing. It was just when the fossil specimens were actually put into the collection. And we need to follow through the IRS as well and not get on their bad side. So thank you. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm hoping that it will go seamless for all of these organizations.
Thank you. Are there any? Oh, go ahead.
Clint Boyd, senior paleontologist with the Geological Survey. As you mentioned, there was around 190 specimens, federal specimens, at the Dakota Dinosaur Museum with the Forest Service today and the Leagues. We went over there and inventoried all those. Only about 40 of those are actually on display, so we have left ones that were on display, so the displays are still intact. The other specimens are mostly for comparative purposes and things like that, things that aren't needed right now, so we brought those back for safekeeping to Bismarck, which is where Geological Survey, state fossil collection, based out of. Geological Survey not promising too much, since I don't have the authority to do that, but we're very interested in a partnership moving forward, keeping this museum going to be a great resource for the city. So that's more discussion we'd like to have in the future, but if we follow through on the plan as stated in the agenda of hiring either a geologist or a paleontologist, someone qualified to oversee the collection, from our side, serving as the federal repository, we're happy to keep these specimens on loan at this museum and even potentially provide for additional loans for more exhibits and things like that moving forward, as long as approved by the U S Forest Service, which is where most of these fossils are coming from. So I just wanted to get that on record, that we're hopeful that something can be worked out, and moving forward, we'd like to work with the city as much as possible.
Is there anybody else that wants to comment on that issue? Then, you know, I think for you as commissioners, do you want to encourage Mr. Kessel and his staff to keep going forward?
Definitely. Yep. I anticipate that we'll have something before you then by the city commission, as we stated, the Leagues are eager to go to Colorado and put this closure on the issue. I think it's a pretty huge, very huge one. Thank you. Back to the force of the city, any questions?
Any questions for the city administrator? All right, we'll move to item five, public safety, and Chief Seabuck from Fire Department has an item here. Chief, you really know how to empty your room.
Good evening, President Johnson, Commissioners. You know, I can't help but notice that when you call tab five, Fire Department, a lot of times, how do you room empty? So I'm not sure what that is. I'll try not to take that personally.
At least we're not leaving.
At least you're not leaving, or is it that you can't? One or the other, I'm not sure. We have in front of you tonight a grant application for an energy development grant to help us to provide some concrete surfacing on our training facility. This grant would be a zero match on the part of the city, and the grant application does require that it come before you, at a commission meeting, and that Mayor Johnson and the city administrator will sign off on it.
Okay, you've had the information provided to you here. You've heard his introductory comments. Do you have any questions, comments? Is there a motion regarding this item?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Decker, Mr. Jackson. Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Go to engineering. Item A is Apex Task Order Number 14. Are you doing that, Mr. Coobes?
I will. Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, the first item under engineering is for Apex Engineering Amendment to Task Order 14, which was their task order to do general planning and modeling services, specifically as it relates to sewer. This amendment would modify the original task order, which was not to exceed amount of $100,000, to a not to exceed amount of $175,000. The amendment covers planning and modeling services for the city in regards to projects or concerns with sanitary steward and some stormwater issues. The city staff recommends approval. I would add that the reason for this amendment, it was kind of a line item that we put in our budget for planning and modeling services. This year, we've had quite a few projects where we've, we as the city have requested this many times. What we budgeted for was for developments come in and review those and plan for what size sewer lines and what size storm sewer lines we need in those. This past year, we've had quite a few instances where city staff has engaged a This past year, we've had quite a few instances where city staff has engaged Apex to do modeling and planning services on behalf of the city. So again, this would amend the contract amount to $175,000. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Kubus? Is there a motion regarding this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have the motion to approve and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a pipeline license issue.
The next agenda item is for pipeline easement for BNSF crossing. This crossing permit is for water main upgrade project, which was the city's priority project number one for 2015. As you remember, about a year ago, we were certain notice that BNSF was going to be making upgrades to their rail through town and that we might need to adjust any or all of our crossings underneath the railroad. So immediately, well, shortly thereafter, we had prioritized that as our number one priority project. Didn't know what it would be yet. We ended up only having to modify two crossings with the with the work that BNSF is doing. The one work is is being done at State Avenue, and that got combined with the State Avenue Bridge project that we heard about earlier today. And the the second crossing was at Fourth Avenue East. And initially, we thought we would combine that Fourth Avenue East crossing upgrade with the East Balar or the East Broadway project. That project took a little bit longer than we wanted to, so instead, we have tied this work with the project that's, we're calling the Sixth Avenue Southeast Water Main Ties, was recently bid and awarded at commission here a couple of months ago. And so this permit, the the work in the permit is scheduled to begin this September 21st with completion this year. We also do need railroad protection liability insurance, which would bring the the total fee of this permit to $7,217. City staff recommends approval. With that, I'd put it up to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kubus. Any comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding this agreement?
Will we approve it?
Second.
We have motion to approve and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Anything else from engineering?
That's all I have today unless you have any questions for me.
All right, we'll move to Public Works, and there's a change order on the West Pump Station in Forsmain, and Public Works Director Zaroff will introduce this item.
Thank you, President Johnson and Commissioners. This evening, I have one change order from William Sible, the West Pump Station and Forsmain Project. This change order reflects work changes with temporary power, door flashings, and brushes. That also includes a reduction in the tree and landscaping allowance and the unused soil, contaminated soil allowance as part of the project. The overall change order is a deduct of $34,315.60. And if you have any questions on the RFC or the request for change, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? This is for changer or deduct. Is there a motion regarding this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have the motion to approve, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go down to planning. Mr. Hadley, you have a report?
Yes, Mr. President. I just have a quick overview of landscaping policy that was put in place in 2012. And it's a good idea, but it actually required people to put property, trees on property and private property. And we're encouraging people to put it in the public boulevards at this time. So we're just, we're reading through the process with help from Public Works, the street department, and the legal folks. We middle down all of the outstanding cash checks that we have or holding and basically getting those out. They're completed, I think, all three. I think all three today have been completed. To continue to encourage people to do it on the public boulevards instead of private property because it really isn't any guarantee that it was a state. And that's kind of the whole idea of acquiring those to put in is that it has a longevity and impact, and it's a it's a part of our infrastructure decision. So we moved that forward and just wanted to give you an update. We probably will be taking a lot of those checks in to reserve landscaping for COs in the future, and we feel we can handle more in this area. It also does tie into, we are going to do an annual review of all special needs permits and development agreements. The legal folks have reviewed and approved, going back to probably 2012. We have the list for 2015, pretty well compiled at this time, gone through a fair amount of them. We will ensure that the conditions that we have approved in the Dallas, will be reviewed and approved and completed on the on sites. We do have some challenges because some of the ownership has changed. Obviously, those are the property, the conditions approved that we will prove go with the property. So those new owners actually inherit that responsibility. They may not know that they inherited that responsibility. So that may be a touch of situation, especially for the items that have been around since 2012. So we do have a few of those. So we are going to try to do the follow up on that. It will be an annual event that we do involve just to make sure that this compliance with development agreements and special needs conditions are really there. Just wanted to kind of give you an update or review of that process. Our process for entitlements on from planning also will be expedited. Right now, it's about a two month process. When someone comes in with an application, that application process, if it's complete, it will take people a month to go through that process. So that's actually the development community, the input that I receive from the development community is all available. It does require them to do a little work upfront. So we are moving forward that to see some of the items that we've expedited, the actual orders form. We've actually expedited some of those already, if they appear to be complete enough for us to move through the process and get confidence. So if you have any comments on that process, we are doing ordinance revision, standpoint of reviewing items in our ordinance that may or may not be issues or problems or conflicts with where we might want to go. If you have any comments you would like to see addressed, any ordinance or special concerns, please let me know. It does look very messy.
Any comments right now up ahead?
I think what you're doing with SUPs is really good. I think we need to do with PUDs also.
Yes, we will. Yes, there's a very few.
Before we get in trouble. But back to the boulevard plantings, are we actually requiring plantings in the boulevard for a new home?
Yes, actually, and actually, I think a step further, the older ones that we have deposits on, we're urging them, letters to the building department section, urging We have a number of problems with those being planted on public private property. We have the calls from the attorney for public property the other day, where people were planting trees and private land easements. He was wondering because they also, oh, we're going to get in trouble with the city if we don't plan. I'm sure he was finding a different location inside the easement. There's a number of issues that have just come up that we wind up being in the door. And also, there's no guarantee. If I purchase a home and acquire plants and trees and the president buys a home, he doesn't like trees, what's the proceeds in the day that's cut down? And there's absolutely no reason why. And there's no analogy for that resource. That's the idea. Why is there being a public infrastructure, including basically all the civil affairs that is, you know?
Anything else?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Well, then, that brings us to city commission issues, and I have one issue to bring up, but before I bring mine up, are there any by commissioners here? Okay, I mentioned at the start that I wanted to discuss executive salaries. And I have a handout here. May not be enough for everybody at the table, but I'll just just read it. "The city for several of its professional positions has had difficulty in attracting a reasonable number of qualified applicants. Also experienced turnover in some of these professional positions. And I am concerned that the city is below the compensation market, and this has led the city to outsource for some of its professional services. Outsourcing and turnover is costly for the city. I suggest the commission increase the compensation scale for the exempt positions. The city compensation system consists of 12 pay grades. Grades one through seven are for non-exempt positions. These are the jobs which receive overtime pay. Grades eight through 12 are the exempt positions, the jobs that do not receive overtime pay. Grade seven, the highest compensation grade eligible for overtime pay, when adding a modest amount of annual overtime, two hours per week, 104 hours, has approximately the same minimum and maximum annual compensation amounts as does grade eight, the lowest compensation grade not eligible for overtime pay. I recommend a 15 percent interval between each grade, beginning with the interval between grade seven and eight." And you can see on the handout, grade seven, I have the 2015 and minimum and 2015 max, assuming 104 hours of overtime. And then you heard earlier in the budget presentation that they're budgeting cost of living increase to the overall scale of one and a half percent. So I've included that in the 2016 minimum and max. You can see the minimum and max for grades eight through 12 for 2015 as they currently are. If you follow the 15 percent intervals for 2016, the numbers I've reflected there, if I've done my math properly, would represent those 15 percent intervals. You can see it's a fairly significant change from where we are today. An adjustment of this magnitude would not necessarily increase the compensation of all the incumbents occupying the positions in grades eight through 12. I think salaries for exempt positions are influenced by multiple factors, among them are but not limited to the degree of responsibility, job performance, market conditions, experience, education, and professional certification requirements, technology skills, working conditions, and other factors. In other words, it becomes a fairly subjective decision in setting salaries for people in these professional positions. But I'm concerned that we're not attracting enough applicants and we're not retaining our professionals in these positions long enough. And I think we're kind of fooling ourselves. This proposal for your consideration, which I don't expect you to act on tonight by any means, but while it would increase some salaries, I think actually it would reduce costs because of the turnover costs and the outsourcing costs. So I just wanted to bring that up and put it on the agenda at probably the next meeting for you to really consider, because it would have some budget implications. And if you went along with this or something close to this, I'm sure we'd have to make some adjustments to our 2016 budget. But I've been concerned for some time about our inability to attract qualified applicants or at least insufficient numbers, and we have had some retention issues in the past couple of years. That, if you have any reaction, please go ahead and and react. If you want to wait till next meeting, that's fine too.
The only thing I would say is that I think if we looked around us in the city and outside across the state at positions that are equivalent, we're not leading the charge with our compensation at all. So I think it's good that this is being reviewed. You know, the exact numbers, I guess we can debate, but but I think this is good.
If you need a refresher in in the salary scale, I'd encourage you to make an appointment with Mr. Kessel and and sit down and go through it. I brought one copy with me today, but I I did spend some time looking at it, and I think we do have, we should make some adjustments here. But I'd encourage you to sit down with him too.
I think we do, is the only executive team member that we don't, or I could, hopefully that's not a question of my ability as a manager to retain that.
And I have no connection with the dinosaur museum. That's your word.
So this, you know, may help the situation that doesn't count as an application for I certainly.
Well, like I said, I don't expect you to act on it tonight, but I would like to have this placed on the agenda for our next meeting. So between now and and that meeting, again, like I said, I'd encourage you to spend some time with Mr. Kessel and go through what we formally have today. So we're going to close with comments by Ms. Wanko, but before we do that, is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission? So you can come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. No one from the public, so Ms. Wanko has asked if she might say a few closing words.
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioners. As Mr. Kessel has alluded to, this is my last official day with the city and my last official city commission meeting. I just wanted to take a few moments to thank everyone, thank the city, Mr. Kessel, the executive team members, the leadership team members, for all that they've done. I have had the privilege and the honor of serving as the interim city attorney of Matt Hope's departure. As soon as we were approached with this idea, it was something that I wanted to be involved and was extremely excited to do it. I'm lucky to be to say that I've had the privilege of working with all of you as professionals, but also getting to know you as people, and that has been the most rewarding part of this experience for me. A big thank you to you, city commissioners, Mr. Kessel, executive leadership team members who know who you are, all of the staff at City Hall who's been extremely welcoming and and warm and and keeping me feeling like I was part of the team. And especially a big thank you to Rita Binstock, who's been a resource for me, making sure that I have what I need when I need it. Obviously, you were hired as outside counsel, and I can tell you that at no time during my time in the city did I feel like I was outside counsel. I always felt like I was part of the team. So that, I think, is a great testament to the people that you have here at the city. And I would just like to say I wish the city the best. I truly enjoyed it. It's been a great experience, and thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you for those comments, and we appreciate the job that that you've done.
Which really has to commence rather than in such a short amount of time, come up to speed of a variety of issues that are technically difficult, and I'm glad that we proved the contracts, we've continued work, and we're based in a legitimate capacity.
Well, with that, Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned.